I'd like to call to order the February 8th, 2021, meeting for Plymouth Township Council. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everybody. Our first item tonight is a unit citation from Plymouth Township Police Department, and we're going to hand that over to Mr. Gannon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whereas on January 1st, 2021, at 12:01 a.m., Plymouth Township Police Dispatcher, Andrew Thomas alerted Plymouth Township officers of a robbery involving a motor vehicle as well as a gunshot victim in East Norton Township. And whereas Plymouth Township Police Officers responded and positioned themselves on the border of Plymouth Township to intercept the armed assailant fleeing the crime scene in a stolen vehicle. And whereas Plymouth Township Police Officers located the stolen motor vehicle and arrested the armed assailant without injury to either officer or the suspect. And whereas Plymouth Township Police Dispatcher Andrew Thomas's proactive alert and officers tactical actions led to the successful arrest of an armed and violent assailant in the residential area of Plymouth Township. And whereas Dispatcher Andrew Thomas, Officer Mark Ransom, Officer David Phillips, Officer John Fullerton, Officer Cameron Legg, Officer Jeffrey McMahon, Officer Kyle Lowry, and Officer George Kornick utilized proactive communications and tactical teamwork to safely apprehend an armed and dangerous assailant in a residential area. Now therefore be it resolved that the Plymouth Township Police Dispatcher and officers involved be commended for their outstanding teamwork and law enforcement actions. Be it further resolved that this resolution be entered on the official minutes of Plymouth Township, and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to each officer and dispatcher adopted this eighth day of February 2021. And I make a motion that we approve this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gannon. I have a motion for Mr. Gannon. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett. Any comments or questions from council?
Great job.
And Chief, I believe you'll have a few words before we vote to approve.
Yes, thank you. I'd just like to thank all the officers for their proactiveness and their working together. One minute into the new year, they were confronted with carjacking and a shooting right down the street in East Norton. And getting together and using planning and careful tactics, they were able to arrest the suspect without any injury, any... Something that doesn't surprise anyone here. It's, you know, constant good work. We just appreciate them as you do and like to thank them all. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And, you know, always, obviously, we're very proud of our police officers in certainly situations like this. You know, it's always very good to hear that that things are handled in a way that keeps everybody safe, keeps our residents safe, keeps our neighbors safe, and of course, keeps our officers safe first and foremost. So, thank you, everybody, for all of your work and for your outstanding service, and we look forward to continued great reports of success coming from the department. Are there any other questions or comments from the public? So for this unit citation, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
Favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
Favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a swearing in for the New Havenville Fire Police, Chelsea Morrison.
Getting the next group in here.
All right, we're ready?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read, read the oath, and we will swear in Chelsea Morrison. Ms. Morrison, I'm gonna ask you, repeat after me. I, Chelsea Morrison...
I, Chelsea Morrison.
Having, having been duly appointed to the Office of Fire Police...
Having been duly appointed to the Office of Fire Police.
In and for the township of Plymouth, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania.
Montgomery County, Pennsylvania.
Do swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States...
Do swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Did we get that?
Audio problems?
Can I hear us?
Now, can we just start again with "of the Constitution of the United States and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania"?
Of the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And that I will perform the duties of the above-mentioned office with all fidelity.
And that I will perform the duties of the above-mentioned office with all fidelity.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Congratulations. And this will be sworn to and subscribed before me on this, the eighth day of February 2021. And do we, do we need to vote on this, or is that just a swearing in?
No, that's just a swearing in, I think.
Thank you very much. Next is a Citizens Board Resolution for Mike Van Buren, and that one will go to Ms. Bandish.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This resolution is awarded to Mike Van Buren by the Plymouth Township Council in grateful recognition of his generous and outstanding service and contributions rendered as a member of the Environmental Advisory Board. Mike Van Buren served Plymouth Township with commitment and dedication by volunteering his time to the Environmental Advisory Board during a period extending from January 2019 through December of 2020. Now therefore be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council hereby expresses its appreciation to Mike Van Buren. Be it further resolved that this resolution be entered in the official minutes of Plymouth Township, and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to Mike Van Buren, presented this eighth day of February 2021 by Plymouth Township Council, Christopher G. Monero, Chairman. I make a motion that we accept this resolution.
There's a motion from Ms. Bandish. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Higgins. Any comments or questions from council?
I just want to say, congratulations, Mr. Van Buren.
Thank you. And I'm like, was very proud for the work he did and a very active member of the EAB, which really is one of our most active citizen boards that we have here in the township. Any comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Thank you very much, Mike. And then our next Citizens Board Resolution is for Kathy Kemper, and that one will go to Mr. Higgins.
A resolution awarded to Kathy Kemper by Plymouth Township Council in grateful recognition of her generous and outstanding service and contributions rendered as a member of the Human Relations Commission. Kathy Kemper served Plymouth Township with commitment and dedication by volunteering her time to the Human Relations Commission during the period extending from June 2018 through December 2020. Now therefore be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council hereby expresses its appreciation to Kathy Kemper. Be it further resolved that this resolution be entered into the official minutes of Plymouth Township, and then a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to Kathy Kemper, presented at the eighth day of February 2021, Plymouth Township Council. I make a motion to approve this resolution.
Okay, motion from Mr. Higgins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett. Any comments or questions from council?
I don't see Kathy, but congratulations, Kathy.
And the Human Relations Commission is one of our newest boards, and we look forward to to them continue to expand their role in the township as well. Any comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
Favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Thank you, Kathy. Hey, general, is there any general public comment on the agenda? And I will remind everyone that the way that we do public comment is if you click on the Participants icon on the bottom of your screen, and the Participants list shows up on the right, you'll see a Raise Hand button on the bottom right-hand corner, and if you click that, we will see that your hand is up, and we'll call on any members of the audience at any time when we ask for public comment based on first come, first served, and the hand raising. An announcement that an executive session was held on February 1st, 2021. At this time, I would ask for the approval of minutes from our reorganization meeting on January 4th, workshop meeting on January 4th, and a reg, on our regular meeting on January 11th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Ms. Bramblett, second from, I think it was Mr. Gannon. Any comments or questions from the audience, or from council? Okay, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Higgins?
Favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Approval of departmental reports and bills, is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Motion for Mr. Higgins, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Any comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
Favor.
And the chair votes in favor. And moving down to administration, we have our Lafayette Street amended dedication ordinance for first and final consideration, and that one will go to Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Monero. Before council this evening is an ordinance authorizing the amendment of Ordinance 1656, an ordinance laying out and ordaining the tracts of land described herein being the bed of Lafayette Street as a public street, a private access easement, and a drainage easement in Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. The Council of Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania does hereby enact and ordain the following. A, Section 1 of Ordinance 1656 is repealed in its entirety and replaced with the following. Section 1, the following describe parcel or tract of land here and after to be designated as Lafayette Street is hereby laid out and ordained as a public street in Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. All but certain land and premises situate, lying, and being in Plymouth Township in the Montgomery County and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania more particularly described as follows. This will include the required right-of-way for the township road, and then the next very lengthy section of this ordinance is the the coordinates of the street, which I will not read. It also includes a private access easement, also including the private access easement 30-foot wide, including specifically all of the land and premises located on or about, and again, it gives the description, the basin access road baseline stationing, and again, it then describes the legal description. It also includes a drainage easement, including specifically all the land and premises located on or about, and again, it gives the legal description. Section B, the above-described street shall be placed on the official plan of streets of Plymouth Township. Section C, this article shall take effect on the 31st day after the adoption pursuant to Section 504(c) of the Home Rule Charter. Section D, if any provision or part of this ordinance is held invalid, the remaining provisions and parts of this ordinance shall not be affected thereby. If the application of this ordinance or any of its provisions or parts of any person's property or circumstances is held invalid, the application of this ordinance to any person's property or circumstances shall not be affected thereby, ordained and enacted by the Council of Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania this eighth day of February 2021 by Christopher G. Monero, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a motion to approve the Lafayette Street amended dedication ordinance?
No move.
Motion from Mr. Higgins, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett. Comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next is East Norton Township Sewer Sale to Aqua Resolution, and this is a revision, and this one goes to Mr. Gannon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution of the Council of Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, whereas Section 5 of the Act on January 24th, 1966, P.L. dot 1535 number 537, known as the Pennsylvania Sewage Facilities Act as amended, and the rules and regulations of the Department of Environmental Protection adopted thereunder. Chapter 71 of Title 25 of the Pennsylvania Code requires the municipality to adopt an official sewage facilities plan providing for sewage services adequate to prevent contamination of waters and/or environmental health hazards with sewage waste, and to revise said plan whatever is necessary to meet the sewage disposal needs of the municipality. Whereas East Norton Township has prepared a report titled Act 537 Sewage Facilities Plan Special Study for East Norton Township, which addresses purchase of the sanitary wastewater collection system in East Norton Township by Aqua Pennsylvania Wastewater, Inc., including assignment of the township's rights and obligations in all relevant agreements to Aqua. And whereas an intermunicipal agreement exists between Plymouth Township and East Norton Township dated August 13th, 1991, which addresses the acceptance of sewage from properties outside of each respective municipality into their sewer mains, trunk lines, outfall sewers, and pumping stations, and to convey through their respective collection systems any sanitary sewage received under the terms of that agreement to the East Norton Plymouth Whitpain Joint Sewer Authority Sewage Treatment Facility. And whereas a selected sewage disposal alternative to be implemented is the sale of East Norton Township's sanitary wastewater collection system to Aqua, including assignment of all the rights and obligations associated with said intermunicipal agreement from East Norton Township to Aqua. And whereas Plymouth Township finds that the facility plan described above conforms to the applicable zoning subdivision and other municipal ordinances and plans, and to a comprehensive program of pollution control and water quality management. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of Plymouth Township hereby adopts and submits to the Department of Environmental Protection for its approval as a revision to the official plan of the municipality, the above-referenced facility plan. The municipality hereby assures the Department of the complete and timely implementation of the said plan as required by law, Section 5 Pennsylvania Sewage Facilities Act as amended, duly presented and adopted by the Council of Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, in the public meeting this eighth day of February 2021. I make the motion that we adopt this.
There's a motion from Mr. Gannon. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett. Comments or questions from council? Any comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote, and this is on the approval of the East Norton Township Sewer Sale to Aqua Resolution. Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins? Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Okay, moving down to, we have three tax settlements tonight. One for Lowe's, one for Luke Oil, and one for West Ridge Pike LLC and Key Bank, and I'm gonna hand this over to Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Monero. The first one we have this evening is, as you've indicated, it's Lowe's Home Centers LLC versus the Montgomery County Board of Assessment Appeals. The appellant is the property owner, Lowe's Home Center LLC. The appellee is the Montgomery County Board of Assessment Appeals. The intervenors are the Colonial School District, Montgomery County, and Plymouth Township. The property, which consists of approximately 11.23 acres, is located at 2002 Chemical Road within Plymouth Township. The property's current assessment is $7,429,200. An appeal was filed in 2014, and based on the risks and cost of litigation, the parties have decided it is in their best interest to settle this matter based upon the terms and conditions set forth in the stipulation. For tax year 2015, the assessed amount will be reduced from $7,429,200 to $6,171,000. It will remain at that amount for tax years 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019, and 2020, and for year 2021, it will be reduced further to $5,800,000. It will remain at that amount until such time as another assessment of the property is filed by any of the parties. Based on the decrease in the assessment, Plymouth will be refunding to the property owner $15,966.56. It is our recommendation that the board accept this settlement, and if the board agrees, a motion to accept would be in order.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a motion to accept this tax settlement?
So moved.
Motion from Ms. Bandish, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett. Any comments or questions from council? Comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Higgins?
Favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next, Mr. Clark, is Luke Oil North America LLC tax.
The next is, as you've indicated, is Luke Oil North America LLC versus the Montgomery County Board of Assessment Appeals. The appellant is the property owner, Luke Oil North America LLC. The appellee is the Montgomery County Board of Assessment Appeals. The intervenors are the Colonial School District, Montgomery County, and Plymouth Township. The property, which consists of approximately 28,740 square feet, is located at 199 West Germantown Pike within Plymouth Township. The property's current assessment is $583,820, and an appeal of this assessment was filed in 2016. And again, based on the risks and cost of litigation, the parties have decided it is in their best interest to settle this matter based upon the terms and conditions set forth in this stipulation. For tax year 2017, the assessment shall be reduced from $583,820 to $384,290. It will remain at that assessment amount for 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021, and until someone of the, one of the parties files an appeal. Based on the reduced assessment, the township will be refunding the property owner $1,731.91. It is recommended that the board accept, that council accept this settlement, and if council agrees, then a motion to accept this stipulation would be in order.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a motion to accept? No move. Motion from Mr. Gannon, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett. Comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. And then our final tax settlement is for West Ridge Pike LLC and Key Bank National Association. Mr. Clark, one more.
Thank you, Mr. Monero. As you've indicated, this is West Ridge Pike LLC and Key Bank National Association versus the Montgomery County Board of Assessment Appeals. The appellant is the property owner, West Ridge Pike LLC and tenant Key Bank, N.A. The appellee is the Montgomery County Board of Assessment Appeals. The intervenors are the Colonial School District, Montgomery County, and Plymouth Township. The property, which consists of approximately 33,318 square feet, is located at 101 Ridge Pike within Plymouth Township. The property's current assessment is $1,893,500. The appeal was filed in 2017. Based upon the risks and cost of litigation, the parties have decided it is in their best interest to settle this matter based upon the terms and conditions set forth in this stipulation. For 2018, the assessment shall be reduced from $1,893,500 to $973,800. For 2019, the assessment shall be reduced to $967,100. For 2020, the assessment shall be reduced from $936,700, and for 2021, it shall be reduced to $891,100. The property's assessment will remain at $891,100 until one of the parties files an appeal for a subsequent year. Based on the reduced assessment, Plymouth will owe the property owner a refund of $6,207.35. It is our recommendation that council accept this stipulation, and if council agrees, a motion to accept would be in order.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a motion to accept?
No move.
Motion from Mr. Higgins, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett. Comments or questions from council? Comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
Favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Moving down to police and public safety. Chief, anything additional tonight? Sorry, he's unmuted now.
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and going down to public works and sewer. I don't know. I don't know. We're gonna read the snow announcement, and it's not looking good. Not looking good, Kathy, but you're up.
I'll read it, but I apologize in advance. It's time to start thinking about snow. We've been doing a lot of thinking about snow. Residents are reminded that it is unlawful to park or abandon any motor vehicle on any public street or highway in Plymouth Township at any time within 12 hours after a snowfall of three inches or more has occurred, where off-street parking exists. Off-street parking where necessary will be permitted, on-street parking, rather, where necessary, will be permitted only on one side of the street. In even-numbered years, parking will be permitted only on the even-numbered side of the street. In odd-numbered years, parking will be permitted only on the odd-numbered side of the street. So I beg everybody, please park on the odd-number now, so the plows can remove as much snow as possible. This will allow streets to be cleared properly. Vehicles parked otherwise will be subject to removal at the owner's expense. Any motor vehicle parked, stalled, incapable of moving under its own power, or left unattended upon any public street or highway in the township at any time within 12 hours after a snowfall of three inches or more has occurred may be removed or towed to another location by the police department. Property owners are required to clear a path on sidewalks of not less than 30 inches within 36 hours after the snow has ceased falling. In addition, residents are asked to adopt a hydrant. If there is a fire hydrant by your home, you know where it is. If obscured by snow, fire companies responding to emergencies may not. Clearing the snow will help protect both you and your neighbors. And we know it's going to happen again later this week.
Yeah, and we do, you know, call, calling everyone to, you know, please exercise patience as this has been a pretty busy time for our Public Works Department and our, and our crews, and, you know, they're doing the best job that they can, and frankly, I mean, if you compare around to some of the other local municipalities, I think where, where our streets get, get pretty darn clear pretty quickly, and there's, you know, always gonna be times when you get plowed in and when things get a little... a little inconvenient, but, you know, we can't control the weather, and these guys are doing the best they can and putting in a lot of hours. So I do want to thank Chris and all of his crews for the extra work that they've been putting in over the last week. And, you know, I guess we're just making up for last year when it was sunny and sixty degrees through half of February, but comes in waves, I guess. All right, next item under public works is Ridge Pike Sewer Replacement Agreement with Montgomery County, and that one goes to Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, let me, a little bit of explanation. Ridge Pike is being improved by the county. The township has sewer pipes that run under that road. So this is an agreement that I'll summarize for the county to replace the pipes, and we'll reimburse them for the cost. By this agreement, Plymouth Township enters into a cost-sharing agreement for replacement of the township's sanitary sewer in Ridge Pike. The parties wish to relocate, replace, and improve a portion of sanitary sewer that runs under Ridge Pike between Belvar Road and Chemical Road. This agreement is intended to set forth the obligations with respect to the replacement of sewer pipes. The township agrees to compensate the county for the full and total cost of all relocated, replaced, and improved sewer infrastructure, now estimated by Penoni Associates at five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. The final amount billed and due by the township to be determined and paid upon receipt of actual invoices from the county, but in no event shall the township be responsible for payment in excess of the actual cost of the work. We decided, and I think it makes sense, to replace the sewer pipes in conjunction with this project, and it'll end up saving, in the long run, I believe, if we have to replace those pipes otherwise. So I make a motion to approve this agreement.
Yeah, there's a motion from Mr. Higgins to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gannon, comments or questions from counsel? Any comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next is an extension to our recycling contract, and that one goes to Ms. Bramblett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, just as a preface, this is an agreement that Plymouth Township has with other municipalities for Mascaro to handle all of our recycling. The consortium committee has decided that we exercise the next six-month option for recycling services with Mascaro. The option is at the sole discretion of the consortium members, of which we are one. The current six-month extension will expire April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. So in order to give the required sixty days notice, it's necessary to let them know by Friday, February nineteenth. It's necessary that Plymouth Township approve this extension as one of the consortium members. The committee felt that it was not yet in a position to prepare an RFP to go out for bid before the current extension will expire. So they are having six technical assistance studies being done with grants from the Pennsylvania Department DEP, and these studies are will be completed shortly and provide guidance in choosing a path forward that will benefit all the consortium members. The plan is to prepare an RFP to go out and bid in time to have a new vendor selected or to retain Mascaro before the next six-month extension will expire on October twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one. I make a motion that, as a member of the consortium, that we agree to the six-month extension.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bramblett. There's a motion from Ms. Bramblett, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish, any comments or questions from counsel? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
Favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Moving down to engineering, Mr. Manai, anything for tonight? Unmuted?
Report to the Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, going down to subdivision and land development for plans that are currently under review. First one is for Connaughtelli Auto Group, nine oh six Ridge Pike, Mr. Gannon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This communication came in from Dominic Connaughtelli and the above-referenced Connaughtelli Auto Group address at nine oh six Ridge Pike. And they are asking for a six-month extension to review their land development plan until August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. I make a motion that we approve this.
Motion for Mr. Gannon, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett, comments or questions from counsel? Comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next item is proving grounds, fields six through eight, and this one is gonna go to Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Manero. Be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council does hereby approve the land development application prepared for LFT Realty Group Inc., herein after the owner developer prepared by Charles E. Shoemaker, Inc., titled Land Development Plans, Sheets One through Thirty-One, dated September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, last revised January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, proposing the construction of three new turf soccer fields, additional parking, concession, and restrooms, and a pavilion for at the property located at seven two five Concha Hocken Road, Land Development Application Number Twenty-Dash Three, in accordance with said plan, under and subject to the following conditions. One, that the owner developer shall execute a public improvement agreement and memorandum of public improvement agreement as required by the subdivision and land development ordinance, and pay all applicable fees and assessments, including the following. A, impact fee for transportation capital improvements under ordinance number fourteen twenty-six of two thousand and four, as amended, said impact fee is to be determined by Carroll Engineering Corporation. B, a recreation fee of ten thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and nine cents, based on the proposed building gross floor area. C, sanitary and storm sewer outfalls, twenty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars, based on two hundred and seventy-one new parking spaces. D, sewer connection, to be paid in accordance with the fee schedule in effect at the time of payment. Two, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plan to comply with the requirements commented set forth in the January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one report of David P. Conroy Zoning Officer, attached to this resolution to the satisfaction and approval of the said zoning officer. Three, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plan to comply with the requirements commented set forth in the October sixteen, two thousand and twenty, report of Woodrow and Associates, the township engineer, attached to this resolution, except to the extent that waivers are granted herein to the satisfaction and approval of the said township engineer. Four, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plan to comply with the requirements commented set forth in the forthcoming report of the Plymouth Township Planning Agency and the April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty, report of the Montgomery County Planning Commission, attached to this resolution to the satisfaction and approval of the aforementioned township zoning officer. Five, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plan as set forth in the November third, two thousand and twenty, report of McCloskey in favor, favor, the township landscape architect, attached to this resolution, except to the extent that waivers are granted herein to the satisfaction and approval of the township landscape architect. Six, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plan as set forth in the October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, report of Carroll Engineering Corporation, the township traffic engineer, attached to this resolution to the satisfaction and approval of the township traffic engineer. Seven, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plan as set forth in the November fourth, two thousand and twenty, report of Carroll Engineering Corporation, the township sanitary sewer engineer, attached to this resolution to the satisfaction and approval of the township sanitary sewer engineer. Eight, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plan as set forth in the April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty, report of suburban lighting consultants, the township lighting consultant, to the satisfaction and approval of said consultant. Nine, prior to the issuance of any permits, all outstanding legal, engineering, and administrative fees applicable to this subdivision must be paid by the owner developer. Ten, this approval is subject to the fulfillment of all of the foregoing conditions in their entirety, and no permit shall be issued, nor shall any development take place on the property unless and until all such conditions are fulfilled. Further resolved, that the owner developer shall be granted or denied the following waivers from the terms of the Plymouth Township Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance of nineteen eighty, as amended. A, Article Five, Section five oh three point two point A, to allow interior curbs to have a six-inch reveal. It is recommended that this waiver be granted. B, Article Five, Section five oh eight point one, to exclude monuments along Plymouth Creek and Tees Boulevard, since existing monuments are currently in place, it is recommended that this waiver be granted. C, Article Five, Section five one oh point three, to allow more than three hundred feet between manholes, it is recommended that this waiver be granted. D, Article Five, Section five one eight point H, to grant relief from the various parking area landscaping requirements related to the proposed reinforced turf parking area, it is recommended that this waiver be granted. E, Article Five, Section five one eight point H one C, to grant relief from the requirements for parking lot trees for certain islands due to the existing and proposed above and below-ground utilities, it is recommended that this waiver be granted. Duly presented and adopted by Plymouth Township Council at a public meeting held on the eighth day of February two thousand and twenty-one, Plymouth Township by Christopher G. Manero, Chair.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Mister, motion for Mr. Gannon, is there a second?
Okay.
Second from Mr. Higgins, any comments or questions from counsel? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Higgins?
Favor.
Ms. Bandish?
Favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next item is down under conditionally approved projects, not recorded. We have two extension requests. First one is for eight hundred, eight twenty Brook Road, Mr. Gannon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This communication was sent by Randy Wolf in reference to their client, Lilvin Enterprises LLC, eight hundred, eight twenty Brook Road, and they are asking for an extension of their land development plan until July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Make a motion that we approve this.
Motion for Mr. Gannon, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett, any comments or questions from counsel? Comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
Favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next one, Mr. Gannon, is eleven oh three and eleven thirteen Ridge Pike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This communication was from Craig Lewis in reference to their client Econ Development at eleven oh three and eleven thirteen Ridge Pike, and they are requesting an extension to post a required financial security and record the final plans until April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. I make a motion that we approve this.
Motion from Mr. Gannon, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish, comments or questions from counsel? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next one is... I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Chris, interrupt. I was curious if I could, for the next two under escrow releases, if I could either ask counsel to make them conditioned upon receiving, in the first case, money that is owed to the township, and in the second case, some additional paperwork, or else table these two until next month, until those items are taken care of. We were promised some, a check from Beanbo Bakery has not arrived yet, so I would ask that you, you know, make it maybe conditioned upon receiving the check later this month, or, like I said, or table it. And for the Arbor Square, we need a deed of dedication, and there are still some problems with the aspills that were received on the pump station, which will become the township's pump station. So they were hoping to have these things worked out from last week to this week, but it hasn't occurred yet either.
Yeah. Any, any preference from the members of counsel on, on to table or to approve with conditions?
I think I'd prefer to have it tabled.
Yeah.
I would rather have everything in hand first.
I think that's better. Same here.
Yeah, I agree.
That's, that's fine. I, I, I just wanted to bring those things to your attention. Tried to get handled, but they didn't happen, so, all right, so we'll table.
For those two, we'll just table, and then we'll move down to number three?
Yes, yes, please, thank you.
Yep. Okay, the third one is Driscoll Track, Phase One B, Mr. Higgins?
Yes, a letter from Lonnie Manai. At this time, based on field observations of work completed to date, we find that sufficient work completed to release the amount of eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and thirteen cents. By releasing this amount, the total account balance for the project will be reduced to seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-eight cents. I make a motion to approve this escrow release.
There's a motion from Mr. Higgins, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gannon, comments or questions from counsel? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Moving down to code enforcement, first item tonight is a curb sidewalk and lateral inspection fee resolution, and that goes to Mr. Higgins.
Yes, thank you. Resolution, whereas Plymouth Township has adopted ordinance eleven twenty-four, as amended, requiring all grantors prior to transferring ownership of real estate in Plymouth Township to apply for a real estate certification. And whereas Plymouth Township Code of Ordinance is Chapter Five, Article Four, Section five dash seventy-one, provides that the Township Council self-establish and revise the fees for the inspection and certification of real estate by resolution from time to time. And whereas Plymouth Township Council desires to increase the certification fee established by Resolution two thousand and fifteen dash forty-one, now therefore be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council does hereby set a certification fee of twenty-five dollars for the inspection and certification of real estate, duly presented and adopted by Plymouth Township Council at a public meeting held on the eighth day of February two thousand and twenty-one. Just as an explanation, the current fee, I believe, is ten dollars, and this is meant to, basically, the increase is meant to cover the cost of township employees performing this duty. So I make a motion to approve this resolution.
A motion from Mr. Higgins, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett, comments or questions from counsel? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, I will do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, next item is a resolution. I'll take this next one for use and occupancy fee, and this actually comes from the discovery of a handful of kiosks that were, or tenants of the Plymouth Meeting Mall that were not paying business taxes. So we're gonna revise this, or we're gonna add this resolution, and I will read it into the minutes. Whereas Plymouth Township Council desires to establish a separate use and occupancy permit fee for permanent kiosks and studio spaces as regulated by the International Building Code, Chapter Four, Section four oh two point one one. And whereas the Plymouth Township Council Code of Ordinance is Chapter Five, Section five point six, provides that the Township Council shall, shall establish and revise the fees for use and occupancy permits by resolution from time to time. And whereas Plymouth Township Council now desires to establish a separate use and occupancy permit fee for permanent kiosks and studio spaces up to two hundred and fifty square fee for permanent kiosks and studio spaces up to 250 square feet to cover the administrative costs and costs of inspections. Now therefore be it resolved that an annual fee of $50 is hereby adopted, duly presented and adopted by Plymouth Township Council at a public meeting held on the 8th day of February 2021, and I would make a motion that we approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett. Any comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
Favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Moving down to zoning hearings. Ms. Bandish?
The zoning hearing board of Plymouth Township hearing on February 15th, 2021 will be held at 6:00 PM virtually via Zoom. You can get login details at our township website, www.plymouthtownship.org, and also the township's Facebook account page prior to the hearing. The following application will be heard. The one from Radislaw Krolak, I apologize if I mispronounced, applying for a variance from ordinance number 342, as amended in Article 19, if I remember my Roman numerals, Section 1908D. And this is to allow carport in the rear yard of the property. The property is at 704 Clover Lane, which is a B residential zoning district. Anyone with a disability who wishes to participate in the public hearing and requires an auxiliary aid service or other kind of accommodation should contact Plymouth Township at 610-233-0554.
And in addition, there will be the continuation of the pre-zoning as well.
I was just gonna ask you that. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Bandish. And moving down to miscellaneous and old business, we have citizen board vacancy announcements. Ms. Bramblett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following citizen board positions are open. The property maintenance code appeals board has three positions open. The historical architectural review board has one position, and the human relations commission has one position open. Anyone who's interested, please send an email indicating your interest to Karen Weiss, our township manager.
We did have the, we did have the one application for the human relations commission. Can we approve that tonight, or do we have to wait till next month to do that?
You, you could, if you're all in favor, if everyone has read the email. I did, I did let that applicant know that you would discuss it in March because you haven't had a chance to discuss it executively, but I suppose you could. You do have the one appointment tonight, however, for the environmental advisory board that you did discuss on February 1st. Karen, did, did you get that email I sent you today?
I did, Karen. Thank you very much.
So you do have one appointment for the EAB tonight, and your, your human relations commission, if you wanna appoint it tonight, I suppose you can, if you're all in favor, or if, you know, most of you are in favor.
Is, is there anybody on council that did not get a chance to see the application for the human relations commission? Would, would there anybody be opposed to taking a, a vote for that appointment tonight as well?
No objection.
No objection.
Well, we'll do those, I guess we'll do those together next year. All right, so we have citizen board appointments. We'll do the EAB first, and then we'll do the human relations commission second.
All right. Following the resignation of Mr. Van Buren from the environmental advisory board, we do have an application from Eunice D. Franklin Becker. She is interested in serving on the environmental advisory board. She's a longtime township resident and a community leader, and she is very interested in environmental protection and conservation, and that those issues be taken into account as part of our township development planning and operations decisions. I make a motion that we approve the appointment of Ms. Franklin Becker to the environmental advisory board.
Thank you, Ms. Bramblett. Motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. And then the second one would be the appointment for the opening on the human relations commission. We had an application for Mr. William Winchester, who was interested in serving on the human relations commission in the position that we recognized tonight. Open position from Kathy Kemper, and I would like to make a motion that we approve William Winchester to serve on the human relations commission. Is there a second?
I can.
Second from Mr. Higgins. Any comments or questions from council?
I would just add that I, I know Mr. Winchester, and I know his commitment to this area, and I think he'll be a tremendous and helpful addition to the human relations commission.
Thank you, Ms. Bramblett. And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. And anything additional from council? Any general comments or questions from the audience tonight? Do I see any? Last call? All right. Seeing none, we will adjourn for tonight. Thank you, everybody.